You're gonna join the rant fest, Mr. Bokey? Well, welcome, ladies and gentlemen. Good to see you all here in the City Hall and those of you who are attending via Zoom or by phone, welcome. This is the Lakewood City Council's study session agenda for this Monday, November twenty seven, two thousand and twenty-three. So we have a few items for discussion tonight. The first is our joint youth council meeting. So why don't you guys come on up and join us up here? Good to see you all. Yeah, welcome. Oh, very good. So why don't we turn that on for her? So it makes it easy. Why don't you turn it on, the little button here? And when you see the red, there you go, you know you're live. So what I ask you guys, what I ask you guys to do, and Shannon, sometimes if we turn on more than two. Yeah, so it's fine to have one on, but if we get more than two or three, our great antiquated sound system will collapse. So welcome. Good to see you all. Go ahead and introduce yourselves. And again, use the microphones because we're encouraging our audience to tune in and they want to be able to hear. So I will turn mine off when I don't speak and that way you can turn yours on. And everyone can hear you. So welcome.
Yeah, um, I'm Ari Hinkle. I'm a freshman at Harrison Prep.
My name is Yoselin Valenzuela Mendez. I'm a senior at Harrison Prep.
Hi, my name is Alexandra Cota Hernandez and I'm also a junior at Harrison Prep.
Wow, Harrison Prep is well represented tonight. What happened to everyone else? Good for you. Well, welcome. This is your, your chance to kind of fill us in on the work plan for the year and give us a framework for what you plan to work on and what you'd like to do for the next year.
Well, we meet on the first and second Monday of each month from four forty-five PM to six forty-five PM. And during the first Monday of each month, different members of are assigned to present to council immediately after our meeting. Um, the role of youth council is to convey to the Lakewood City Council issues um, that are having a citywide impact on our youth. Um, we're responsible for a monthly report to city council and we participate in a variety of city committees, study groups, and task forces. Um, the youth council has hosted three roundtable discussions. Um, the topics have included youth homelessness, climate change, and policing. They also, we have also hosted our annual youth summit, which focused on youth mental health. And the event included a guest speaker, a vendor expo, um, fun games and activities as well as, um, the, and it was attended by Clover Park grade seven through twelve students. Um, Angel Calderon Ramirez and Chase, Chase Washington were sponsored by the Rotary to attend the two thousand and twenty-three World Affairs Seminar in Waukesha, Wisconsin. Brandon Elliott received the CFQCA and Washington of University Presidential Scholar College, College Scholarships. I'll turn, I'll now turn it over to Jocelyn to talk about last year's accomplishments.
Um, well, my name is Jocelyn Valenzuela Mendez. I'm a senior HP. And I'll just go over some of our great accomplishments that we did last year. Starting off in January, we participated in the air quality presentation and we discussed with the future sound clear air agency. In February, we received presentation from Lions Club Crab Food Feed Volunteer Opportunity from Dave O'Keefe. And we also participated in mental health and drug prevention with Lakewood's Choice. During March, we participated in the City of Lakewood Social Media Discussion with Bryn Grimley and Derek Gibson. Moving on, in April, we presented of Economic Development Strategy with plans and discussion and youth mental health first aid discussion with the Boys and Girls Club staff. In May, we finalized our format video and discussion points for May eighteenth Policing Roundtable. We created a video content for the roundtable and June fifth, the city youth council members had their recognition. We hosted the Climate Change Roundtable and the Policing Roundtable Discussion. And during our last month in June, we finalized the Youth Summit, which was June tenth for the registrations and the duties. We began the marketing for this year's application, the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four. And you know what people needed to join. And we received recognition certificates from city council. And we, uh, hosted the two thousand and twenty-three Youth Summit, which included guest speaker, vendor expo, fun activities, and lots of other things. But I'll turn it over to Alexandra and she will go over our great work that we plan to do moving forward.
Thank you. Um, like I said, or sorry. Hi again, I'm Alexandra. I'm a junior HP and I'm going to be giving you our two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four plans. So, um, backtracking a bit, in August, we started our youth council kickoff event where we all got to know each other by playing a cornhole tournament. Here's our winner right here. And at Fort Silicon Park. In September, we talked, we discussed the purpose of the board and meeting attendance and participa- participation expectations. We also assigned to the five youth council subcommittees to include justice and safety, environmental health, which is what I'm in. Education, arts and culture, social health and media, and communication committees. We elected Angel Calderon Ramirez as chair and Chase Washington as the vice chair as well as assigning city advisory board and committee student liaisons, and we chose forest green as this year's T-shirt color, which we're all wearing. In October, we participated with the, with career team and youth workforce development discussion. And we began planning for the youth summit and volunteered at Truck and Tractor Day for the City of Lakewood. In November, we confirmed May twenty-seventh as our date for the annual youth summit. We confirmed Harrison Prep as location for this youth, youth summit. We determined December ninth for the Holiday Parade volunteer assignments. We announced Springbrook Secret Santa plans. And as well as the Justice and Safety Subcommittee met with Assistant Police Chief John Unfred and Assistant Principal Veni- Ben, sorry, Venidia Willis Holbrook about rights and youth violence and methods for youth to work with Lakewood Police Department. And we continue to work together in our separate subcommittee groups. In December, we planned to create video content for our end-year goals and the December sixteenth Fun Run Dash. We will volunteer at Holiday Lights Event, have a holiday potluck and white elephant gift exchange, as well as present Springbrook Youth with Secret Santa gifts. And in January, we plan to participate in two video sessions of financial literacy, literacy lesson with Your Money Matters and volunteer at the City of Lakewood's Second Annual Welcome Walk. And throughout the yes, rest of the year in two thousand and twenty-four, we continue, we plan to continue working on addressing community initiatives through working in our subcommittees and as a group. Planning our youth summit, increasing familiarity within the community of the good work and purpose youth council serves. Speaking with our student peers about joining youth council and conducting an end of year recap to continue building our positive momentum and to have a great year. Do you guys have any questions?
I'm sure we'll have plenty. Mr. Branstadter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I appreciate all of you coming here to meet the messengers. So I'm going to, you know, apply the standard rule of not to shoot any messengers, but uh, let me just say that last year's activities. Um, look forward to last year's activities as being touching on some areas that were really important. Uh, climate change, youth, youth, youth mental health and some other things. But in the end, the youth council never came forward to the council with any recommendations about what we should do in any of those areas. And I don't know if that was because the youth summit that was kind of wrapping everything up took place after your last opportunity to present to the council. But, um, I am urge you that given this year's subcommittee structure, where you're addressing another group and even a little bit broader group of areas that are interested in the community and that probably the council should be paying attention to doing some things and would benefit from the generational observations of, of those of you, if you could perhaps look at in this current year of urging your subcommittees to think about what they have to, to recommend and maybe having in several dates such as in April, May, and June, different subcommittees. At least if they've been to the extent that they've been able to deal with some recommendations to us provide them because we're, I, I, I guess I will just say as one, I was, I was left with perceptions about what young people think about some of the items that you discussed as a group. But I never got any actual feedback as to what the consensus of the youth council was about what we should do. Uh, or what was you, what do you, are you think there are any gaps in our action plan on climate change? Or, uh, if, uh, we're doing the right things with regards to, to youth mental health. Um, you, you know, it would be, uh, of great benefit to the overall community if you would put those things together and communicate to them. And while I like listening to the reports that we get monthly and, and but that, that honestly, I am more interested in those sorts of things about what you think we should do than what events are going on at Harrison Prep or at Clover Park or at Lakes. Okay, um, so I, so I, I just sort of observed that last year kind of ended uncompleted is, is how I, how I kind of felt about it. And I'm hoping that the new subcommittee structure, and I think you have six of them. Five, five that, that you can stagger so that each of those committees can perhaps in their more in-depth look at some of those issues, give us something either in terms of a presentation or in writing uh, about, uh, recommendations or we're like anybody else. We're, we're certainly willing to, to accept the congratulations that you're doing everything perfectly. If that's what you want to come up with. Okay, thank you.
Any else? Go ahead, Mr. Larson.
I'll, uh, I'll expand on what, uh, Councilmember Branstadter said. I, I really see what you guys do is really important to the city to have that voice of our youth council. So any opportunity you have, provide feedback on what we can do differently. Uh, even if it's on a quarterly basis to align with the orders in your school system, that would be great. And I just had a question, uh, as you're looking forward to the rest of two thousand and twenty-three and into two thousand and twenty-four. What are each of you most excited about in terms of youth council and what you're going to focus on?
Um, me personally, I'm most excited about the environmental committee and like the plans we have up in upcoming December. For example, we plan to collaborate with Lakes High School with a Fun Run Dash to just try and help bring like the community together, but we're still trying to like figure everything out. But currently that's what I'm looking most forward to, just helping bring more people outside and like connecting outside.
Um, I am also part of the environmental committee and I'm also youth council secretary. So I'm really looking forward to like getting closer with all the committees, not like focusing just on the environmental. And I think I'm just looking forward to like getting to know more people like in the city. Cause I feel like as a youth, like I'm not that involved with like adults. So like getting closer to like some adults and how they work, how they live. Like I feel like that's really interesting to me. So and I'm also excited just to graduate. A day in the life, yes, yes, or get ready with me for a day of work. Expand the media.
Um, I'm on the Arts and Culture Committee and I'm most excited to see the impact that the things we plan for the city like have and see the people being brought together by what we do and get along and learn new things about themselves and the others.
Well, very good. Did you have something, Mr. Bokey, and then Ms. Bill?
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember. Great job, you guys. Great presentation. I always am very enlightened of what you're doing and love to hear of all the fabulous things. And I think you have great awareness with your videos that you guys have on social media. I really enjoy those. I think that they're really fun. They're lighthearted. They're on trend. Like you're talking about day in the life. That would be funny. Would love to see a day in the life of the mayor. That would be great. Putting him out there. Um, so and then also, I know I'm going to speak for myself and the rest of councilmembers. We would love to know where you would like to see us involved in your activities. Maybe it's at the youth summit, you know, different things like that or any sort of activities that you're having if you would like for us to do something kind of a special above and beyond. I'm available. I know Tristan also is, so, um, please let us know. We would love to help in any way that we can. And that kind of plays off of what Councilmember Branstadter was talking about. We would like to see something actionable too. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Along the lines of, um, and I don't want to heap, you know, I don't, don't want this meeting to become just heaping work on you guys because it sounds like you have a pretty aggressive plan. One of the things that we're trying to get our arms around and we have not been able to, I don't believe as a body, I speak for all of us here, but is, uh, we have opioid settlement money coming. And or it's arriving and it will be arriving over the next seventeen years. And as of today, we've decided as a city to go it alone, which means we don't have a lot of money, so we can't set up our own rehab hospital or anything like that. But we are looking for ways to spend it and we are, and, and the target population would be, you know, people who, and it's a pretty broad swath, right? This opioid epidemic has not spared many age groups, hasn't spared any age groups at all. But I think your input on it and maybe spending some time with it and it's a little bit complicated because we don't know yet. I mean, we're trying to figure out, everybody's trying to figure out how they should spend it, what they should do with it. What would be the best means of, of, you know, do we talk more about prevention? So what does prevention mean? Right? Um, what would impact, uh, folks your age and in your age group, and I'm saying, you know, fifteen to twenty-five or something like that, you, you know, what, what would work? Uh, or what we think would work, because I don't know that we know exactly what would work. But if you could, if you could have that discussion, I think it would be really helpful because we don't have our arms around it yet. The money is going to go to our allocation committee. And I think they're going to look at us and say, well, when we take, take in, uh, proposals, what, what do you want us to, to discuss? And, and we're, we don't know, right? Right now, the answer would be, uh, uh, prevention, uh, doing something with helping people get off the street. We don't know. So if you could have that discussion, I think, I, I know I would, and I think we all would really appreciate it. If you had some really in-depth discussions, because I've, I've got to think that even at your young age, you you've had folks, you've, you've had maybe family members, certainly neighbors. I've had neighbors who have been adversely impacted by this epidemic.
And the conversation. Um, so what I can, I can promise to do is, is, um, dedicate, you know, one or two, if not more of our meeting times, maybe invite Lakewood's Choice in, who that's what they deal with. And maybe we can do surveys. We can also look at our committees, um, in the schools, can start dialogue, maybe host some discussion, maybe pass out some surveys as well. But yeah, I really like that idea. So, uh, we, we promise that that's something we will work on this year for sure.
Could speak to. I'm also part of the Superintendent Youth Advisory Council with Superintendent Ron Banner. And we also have subcommittees and I'm in the Fentanyl Awareness Committee because we've noticed a rapid increase in obviously like the use and prevention. So right now what we're working on is to create like interactive videos, I guess you'd call it, to get like more teenagers, because we were discussing, we were saying like, let's be honest, like some teenagers our age like don't really like think of it as a serious problem, but like it is a serious problem. Like we have to be aware and we have to like inform people of the risks and, uh, can happen. So we are working with that with the Clover Park School District. But I think if we like work with like the Lakewood City and the school district, like we could reach a bigger audience to get like more awareness out there. So I don't know how this would play out, but like, because I can talk with Grant Twiman and Amari Davis. They are the, um, advisors for this, for youth superintendents. So I think like if I bring awareness to them that the City of Lakewood wants to help to raise more people's, um, attention towards this. I'm, I'm pretty sure we could work something out between all of us, so.
I think it's a great topic area and I, I was just going to chime in and hopefully not say the same thing, but you're getting a sense that we want to make this experience, uh, meaningful for you uh, and impactful for us, right? And so one of the ways, and I'm, I'm just thinking out loud to do it, in addition to the subcommittee work you're doing and the fun event work you're doing and the networking work you're doing. You mentioned two or three really important topics, youth mental health, uh, youth homelessness and certainly drug awareness and prevention, right? Those kinds of activities. I think it would be of value, if I were in your shoes, uh, to frame your year where maybe the first, you know, meeting or so, you've got your networking, your, your ice breaking, you get to know one another and through staff facilitation, you guys brainstorm on the topics for your year. It's your year, right? The ones that are going to be meaningful to you. And then maybe the next few meetings, of course, you've got all your subcommittee stuff, but when you get together as a body, maybe you, uh, you, you receive and digest the data that's pertinent in Lakewood with regard to the issue or the topic of choice, whether it's homelessness again, drug awareness and prevention, whatever the issue is. And then you start working through that, understanding the data, you have discussions and you form, uh, maybe action options and you present it to each other and you discuss and debate. You know, what might be the best, uh, form to address one or more of those significant issues. And ultimately that kind of bubbles up to the youth council or the youth retreat or the summit rather, where you test your, your thought with a wider audience of youth from around the city, right? And they all know, and then you, it's the theme is going to be whatever X it is. And then ultimately out of that comes, uh, the survey work through actually the youth summit itself, because you'll have breakout sessions, you get feedback. And ultimately that should roll into recommendations, as Mr. Branstadter indicated, back to us. Because you would have an impact on saying, we have worked on this topic for a year. This is what we learned. This is what we found out. And this is what the youth recommends we pursue as options as a community. And that may include funding recommendations to, you know, organization A, B, C, or D, and you've determined which one might be the best. And what level of funding they may need to address or at least start to address the concerns that you've determined are real and valid based upon the data and the, uh, conversations you've had in depth with your, your classmates and colleagues. That's the kind of stuff that really gets the end of the mix of something. I think it would be of value to you. Certainly would be of value to us. And it would be, it would make for a very meaningful year in addition to all the other fun things you're doing. But I think digging in and brainstorming at the beginning of the year, deciding on what you're going to tackle and then figuring out how to dig into it. And make the digging in and the culling of the information, uh, fun, but of value to you. Now, that's what I would recommend. Yeah. Yeah, and I think if people yep, and then of course, the day in the life of the mayor would be great. So whoever wants to join me starting at six in the morning at the gym and then we can leave at eleven o'clock on Monday night after I get done with this. And you can come watch me push paper all day at my job. It'd be great.
I think just get ready with me would be better though.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, exactly. Yeah, I'll work on that too. So, but it's great to see you all. Thank you for your, your significant participation and interest in your community. It's of great value. And we just want to make it even of greater value for you because, you know, down the road, you're looking at your college essays, right? I've just, uh, helped write a few, uh, tweak a few. Uh, and you know, this can be a very significant piece of that platform, your voice, right? As you enter into the next phase of your professional life, which is going on to school and figuring out an area of interest for you. And people in those admission seats, they want to hear from you about what's important to you and what kind of activity you've done to prepare yourself to address those issues as a young adult. And so it's really important what you're doing. So take advantage of it. Take advantage of us. Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah, for sure. And you know, we're looking for leaders down the road, right? Because, uh, we're, we're not going to be sitting in these seats forever, nor should we. And it's really incumbent on you folks to step up and be the next leaders of the future. The community needs you, right? So thanks for all you're doing. Yeah. Hey. Next, we go into a review of, I was not going to say rant, a review of the Lakewood Municipal Code, uh, one twenty related to the city logo and seal.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Bryn Grimley. I'm the Communications Manager for the city and I'm here this evening to talk with you, um, about the city's logo and seal. Um, so, uh, this was a request of council to come forward and share, um, how we currently have uh, both the logo and the seal represented. So, um, hopefully you've had an opportunity to go over the memo. I'm not going to read it verbatim. Um, but as I identified, um, our low, our code currently, um, has language in there about the logo, um, for in LMC Chapter one dot twenty. Um, and it outlines basically the appropriate use. Um, it also talks about the seal specifically and, um, what that looks like. And, um, I went and I looked around at other cities and I looked at all their codes. And I did a, a total of twenty-five and I tried to look at both large, small and kind of midsize just to see. And of that research that was done, um, twenty-one actually do not have any mention of their logo in their code at all. Um, and then those that do, it's not necessarily the same as Lakewood's. Um, I think University Place probably would be the closest and that to me also makes sense because they incorporated a year before Lakewood did and there's a possibility that we may have looked at what they had done and, and replicated it, um, as often as the case, uh, when you're building your own city and your own codes. Um, so, uh, and another piece too is, um, I noticed that nobody I noticed that nobody talked at all about color uh in any of their uh those that did mention it. It really was just. This is the logo. This is how it should be used. Others maybe said um. You know, the communications division is the holder of the logo, and people need to ask uh permission to use it. And a lot of that is frankly just quality control, to make sure that anybody isn't just grabbing your logo and saying you endorse something when you don't. So it's it's also making sure um that if it's going out there to be used by somebody other than the city, it's being used in a way that the city approves of. Um and also, you know, with that, the more nitty-gritty design concept things, okay, you can't distort it, you can't change it, things like that, that keep its integrity. Um so uh after looking at it, um you know, I I also just reviewed what we had in our code. And and a couple of the attachments actually show, in addition to the appendix, which shows you which cities I looked at. I included uh, I kind of went through the rabbit hole of past legislation and found the legislation that we passed um. Here at Lakewood uh around what logo should you should be used. And um it goes back to the very original one, which had the city of Lakewood with the cursive and the emblem. Um which has since, actually council has since retired that. That's now a historic logo, so it shouldn't be. Used, although I know it is on our doormats out front, and I think we even have some envelopes still with it, so we're working to get those um updated. Um and i- it also walks through as well, uh probably the most recent action, which was back in twenty twelve. Um which set the historic logo and then also um identified a primary logo, a secondary logo, an emblem logo. Um and originally, i- if you noted, um it did actually go so far as to say which colors those should be. But then council came back a a few months later and um rescinded probably isn't the proper parliamentarian word. But basically struck that from the code and said, no, we're not going to actually list the colors in code. Because those will be covered by an internal style guide that will be used. Now, I will tell you, when I joined the city back in two thousand and seventeen. That style guide was not really being used. So there was not really anything. As a communications manager. I was looking at what do we use, how do we use it, and there was nothing. Um and I had to sort of figure it out as I went. Which is why we created the brand guide that we brought forward to you back in August. Um because we really needed to have something that said, this is how we should be communicating and using um this information. So um you know, I think uh as outlined in the memo, there's there's pros and cons um to listing the logo in code. You know, I think the one thing that should be noted is we do have all of our logos um that are currently active. Uh copyrighted with the state, and we do renewals on those, so they are all protected against any sort of copyright laws. Um I have had a few times to reach out to people and tell them, you're not using, you're not allowed to use our logo, you're using it without our permission. I always start politely and just educate them, because sometimes people don't realize. And if I have to, I can go to the city attorney and. Get a formal letter, which I did have one group that. Um I did have to go so far as to, I think, send them a letter, and then they stopped. Um so that's typically how we handle it, um and that's something that's protected regardless of being in code or not uh being copyrighted. Um and we've, you know, got those renewals set up between the clerk's office and the communications division to make sure there's no laps in those. So um as far as any sort of recommendation, it's really just um to continue to allow the versatility and flexibility. To be able to use it based on the medium um and the the design where it might be used, whether that's in print, on the computer. Through video, however, um we may need to, or frankly, how technology may evolve down the road that we haven't even thought of yet. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any of me.
Just just so I'm clear uh on the proposed. Change, I'm looking at. What appears to be Appendix C on our page fifteen. Is that what we are going to? Effectively adopt an update or no? Cause that has a color in it. Maybe I'm just reading the the memo incorrectly.
Sorry, Mayor, didn't interrupt you, but that's the, that's currently, that was um so minus the part that's um struck out. That's currently what the code is. It it identifies a primary logo, a secondary logo, and an emblem logo.
Minus the color. So will Appendix C even uh be attached to the new ordinance? In color or in black and white, or what's what's the plan there besides the historic logo, which is in color?
So I don't have any ordinances that are proposed, because I'm not proposing any change. Um these are just, these are just past ordinances. I wanted to provide them for background, so you could see what actions prior city councils have taken.
Okay.
Um but should council wish to have an ordinance, I'd be happy.
So the August twenty twelve, remove the color piece, I see there in subparagraph D. So there's no need for us to update, quote unquote, or amend the ordinance with the. The flexible. Emblem or secondary logo, or whatever we're gonna call it.
It's all in there already.
Anyone else? Questions? Mr. Laurel, and then Mr. Branstad.
Just real quick, you brought forward the style and brand guide back in August. Is anything in the municipal code in conflict with that, or is it all?
No, it's all there. Um there's nothing um that we did that conflicts with. Um with code.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Branstad?
Yes, yes, thank you. And I. I understand we're not changing any designs, and you're not recommending changing any designs. We we already did ten years ago uh eliminate the. The mandatory. Colors down to the 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 computer code for them to be able to go and do that. And we, as a matter of practice, have, depending upon the. Where the logo was being used, have done them in black and white when that's. Fits in with the with it with the document or the or 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 how we're using it. In the memorandum, under challenges. Under flexibility and adaptability, it says enshrining the city logo in municipal code restricts flexibility to adapt to changing times. And I'm trying to understand. What that means and and why that is. What what what's the meaning of that sentence trying to communicate to me?
Sure. So I think it would be if um if you were to get so specific in code where you said it has to be this typeface, right? So it has to be this specific font, and it has to be this specific size, and it has to be these specific colors. Um then anytime there were to be a change or an update to that, we would have to come back to council and request. Um a change to the ordinance to make any sort of change. If if we were to really follow it strictly to the letter of code, um we would not necessarily, depending on how council felt, have that flexibility. To say, well, putting, you know, this green, blue, and and white on a, you know, bright orange document, for example. It clashes. It doesn't look good, but if it were white, or if it were black, it would look better from a design standpoint. Um you we would not be able to do that if it were so specific in code to where it like. Outlines every single logo must be this way and only this way.
But as the code currently exists, you have that flexibility.
Correct. I would say.
So 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 this this challenge doesn't exist. It would only exist if we were to modify the code in a more restrictive way, but it. It's not really a problem with the way the code reads now.
Correct.
Okay. I did to to, you know, I guess I I'm. I'm uh. I I I'm fine. I I I guess the the the, one of the reasons why. You were asked to do this presentation to us was there. Seemed to be a. A number of months ago, a. Use of the logo or depiction to it that seemed to be a departure. From what we were used to. And uh. But I I don't think that we ever thought that it was a, it was outside of the. The ordinance that we, you know, and I I was here for the discussions in twenty twelve, and it was like. Discussions about logos in a lot of. Organizations and nonprofits and things that 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 I've been in. The the discussions before you finally agree on something seem to take. Forever, uh when 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 you give people the idea, the the idea to put two cents in. But uh you know, I I think that our logo is. Remains. Distinctive to the extent that we want it to be, that when people see it, they recognize it as Lakewood's logo. Even without the word Lakewood on it. And and I and I think that that has to do with the fact that we've exerted our presence across. You know, in 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 many ways across across the region, and it goes on and on. And and I think that the behind-the-scenes. Messaging of what the the logo stands for is as a da- is as is as appropriate today as it was when we became a city. You know, it 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 reflects things about history and environment and and things that are there. So, you know, I'm I'm looking forward to not having to deal with an ordinance. And and for things that to remain consistent in respect to the themes and the and 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 the message that the logo. Conveys um and 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 that it is remains distinctive enough so that people know that it's us. Um with well with the flexibility to make it positioned and colored and moved around on 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 a specific document. To make the document more impactful.
Yeah, I'm I'm still struggling a little bit, to be honest. Maybe it's, I don't know, my simplistic look at it. When I look at page fifteen, I see that Appendix C. I understand that we're not making, quote unquote, any change. And perhaps we don't want to make any change in ordinance, or make it too specific that we have to in the future make change. But I'm having a cognitive dissonant disconnect with the secondary logo. Just on the font. When I go down to the next page, which is. Uh the next item on our agenda tonight, and it's Ms. Spears' memo to council, and it's got the secondary logo with a different font. And my thought is, if we're gonna use, if we're gonna adopt that as the font, why wouldn't we include that? As part of the secondary logo in a new or an amended ordinance, and maybe I'm. Being silly here, but I I'm just trying to find consistency.
So um that font was never in the code, so that was the font that was selected at the time that that logo was chosen.
Right.
Um and since then, design style has changed.
Yep.
And so the code as it exists now allowed us the flexibility when we created the brand guide. To change the font to something that's more agreeable to present day, be it digital or other means. But we kept the same. Feel, I guess you could say. I don't want to say look, because you could argue the font maybe looks different.
Yeah.
But we kept the emblem, we kept the typeface, same idea, right? The the bold low Lakewood, the less bold up top, but we changed the font style. Um and the brand guide is where we really locked in that you can't change that. So I couldn't tomorrow say, well, for this piece of paper, I'm gonna make it cursive, because I'm feeling kind of cursory today. Um to do that, the brand guide would have to make a change, and it would have to be a uh, you know, not necessarily a painstaking process. But it would have to be a thought-out process. Um so we kept the same feel. But we updated it. And I think that's sort of what you see is is i- if you get super restrictive in code. You would limit that ability, and and it would have to become a very lengthy process. Um that would kind of do potentially, as council member Branstad stated, everyone going around the table throwing out their ideas.
Right.
Which isn't wrong, um and council certainly could could ask for that, but. Um as it stands now, we have the flexibility to say, okay, well, for example. Sixty percent of our mobile u- or of our website users are mobile. This type of font face actually doesn't do well on a mobile device. We need San Sarah. Or, gosh, that looks really nineteen seventy-two. Let's maybe get a little more twenty twenty-three. You know, I mean. It it, yeah, sure, design is subjective, but this allows us the flexibility. So um. All we did was sort of give it, I guess you could call it a refresh.
Why why wouldn't we consider updating the ordinance, since we've got all the time in the world? To just reference something about. The city adopting the symbol depict blah blah blah, consistent with. The the brand guide as maybe change or modify from time to time, or something like that. Just to kind of button and suspend her a little bit. I don't know. Maybe it's not even necessary, but I look at it and it, you know, in my. In my world, there's a difference between uh copywriting and trademarking, right? And trademark uh deals with the mark, and the mark is not just the symbol. It can also be the words, and it's not just done at the state level. Typically, trademarking is done at the federal level, right? And so it it's inclusive of the style to the mark, the words, you know, the the whole thing. Doesn't have to be, but I've seen it done that way. And again, I I'm not gonna beat a dead horse here. I frankly uh. Am fine with the updated look and feel to it, but it just seems to me we need to. Because if I was a brand-new employee and I came here, I didn't know about the brand guide, we should, because it'd be referred to the communications department. But if I were to open up and look at. The ordinance, and I see the secondary logo and the typeface, and I'd see something else on a sheet of paper, I'd say, well, it's kind of a weird disconnect. Looks fine, looks better, but it's a, it's an odd disconnect without some reference to the brand guide or generic. Comment about it. What do you think? Cause you do this all the time.
So, thank you, Mayor. I think what you made is a great point. I think that the changes that would be made to the logo should be in the brand guideline. And I don't think a lot of these things should be in the code. You should say, brand highlighting. Or we refer to the communications department, those kinds of things in code. Cause then it gives you a lot more flexibility, which we're talking about the flexibility. So for the logo, because of all the various mediums that this needs to go on. So you are taking a very progressive approach to the logo. This is the way logos are being treated right now. I think not putting any parameters like color or very specific things like that is appropriate. I think the easiest thing, it did stand out to me that the font was not changed on that. You could change that, and then. On this document, and then that would be fixed. And then from here on out, if you saw it again, I wouldn't vary from your typeface. Because you're referring back to your brand guidelines, which specifies which font to use and why you're using it. And you're a hundred percent right, that font's not gonna work on a mobile, but the other one does. So you have to find web-friendly fonts, things like that, that are transferable. So I love all those suggestions, and I would definitely point everything back to the brand guideline. So then nothing is specific in code. But it's it's really good. I like it.
Yeah, no, it's it's definitely better, for sure, what you've done with the the brand guide looking. And it and it probably shouldn't have been in the ordinance to begin with, because then you've got this cumbersome thing you gotta deal with, right? But now that we've got it.
I mean, and another option is, which I think maybe what you just said too, is is if we update the the logo. Um and we would never do a major update without council's involvement, right? We're not gonna go decide it's gonna be purple tomorrow and and. Have a bald eagle instead of the trees, mountains, and water. I mean, that would not happen. Um I mean, it could happen, but I'd be in big trouble, so it won't happen. But um but the other thing, the other option is too, we can. Swap out. So those are the files that, when we went digital to code publishing online. Those were the files that were in the folder that just got uploaded at the time, to be honest. They may have not even needed to put them in as an example.
Make it consistent, and just updating the file.
You can just go in, I mean, I'd have to work with the city clerk to find out, you know, that process, but, you know, providing the updated files and just updating them. Um the only other thing would be, you know, there was a designation of a primary and a secondary logo. So if council did feel like that was too restrictive, um I think it, you know, it's it's there. And we'll use them as we use them. Um but, you know, that would be the only thing if you were wanting to remove those designations. But otherwise, um we can just update the online, the code online with the the new. We call it the lockup graphic, basically the lockup logo that has the city of Lakewood text.
And that would be fine, and maybe, I don't know if you'd have to do it, but if you were gonna do it, would it be appropriate to put some? And that would be fine and maybe, I don't know if you'd have to do it, but if you were gonna do it, would it be appropriate to put some reference? In one twenty oh two five. You know, logos depicted blah 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 as as is consistent with the city's, whatever they call it, and brain. Brand guideline as maybe a change or modify from time to time. That way. We don't have to worry about. Yeah. Yeah. Mr. Brand Center.
Well, I I think things are going. Well, in practice, you know, I see the the idea of of having a primary and secondary logo. Meaning is where you're gonna place city of Lakewood, uh I I think that's uh. You you know, it works well to be able to go and do that. Quite 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 frankly, the only thing about this whole thing that I don't like. Is that that we we call that document the brand guy. Like we're trying to sell some something to somebody, that's you know. Yeah, in in other words, I'd rather that document were called something else, but I don't, but I don't, I don't, I don't have a suggestion, but. You know. The connotation of. We're a brand is um. Yeah, I don't know, the 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 personally doesn't fit with. My image of what we want people to think about the city.
What is branding?
I would say that industry standard, it is called a brand guideline, so my suggestion would be to keep it called a brand guideline. Because if if you're asking for that document, you know you're asked, I'm asking for a brand guideline, not to brand something, but I know what I'm asking for cuz it's. In my field, I know that's what we, how we communicate, it's part of our vernacular, so. I would suggest you keep it called a brand guideline.
Yeah, and I would say we regularly do get asked for a brand guideline when we work with consultants um so that they can replicate that if they're producing a website for us. Or product for us or survey, they ask for the brand guide, so it is an industry. Terminology and that's kind of a universal, everyone knows within the design and marketing field. Um in communications world that that's what that is, so and we're seeing more and more municipalities. Kind of fall, you know, probably more did start for marketing of like actual products, right? Selling, but we're seeing municipal municipalities. Um very much so getting progressive and doing that and using it and it's, you know, it's very much a part of. That whole world now, so.
You should just be thankful, there's no required tattoo. All good. Well, thank you. Ms. Grimley, appreciate it. I know. This is important work and I I am all about consistency in branding because it's all, you know. Let's face it, uh. We're all about economic development, economic development requires a bit of salesmanship and salesmanship requires classy. Upscale branding that conveys a message in an image, so. Yep, exactly. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Anything else? Is everyone good? So are we actually gonna see maybe uh an updated ordinance? Do we think we need that? I turn to the city attorney, it would. Show up probably on a consent agenda. I don't think they need to see anything else. I'm gonna turn to parliamentarian. I think if we're gonna tweak this thing in any language, it's gotta come back in an amended ordinance.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if you're going to do tweaking. All you're gonna have to do, you're gonna have to pull it off the consent agenda anyway, so if you think there's going to be more discussion, bring it back for that. If you want tweaking, if um you feel like your communications manager knows what you're looking for.
Tweak with you tonight, if need be, if that results in a need to quote unquote formally amend the ordinance, I would do it. Under the auspices of a consent agenda item.
That we will confer and determine the best placement for this.
Unless you guys want. I mean, do we even have to? Based on what you've heard from us, do we even have to amend this ordinance or not?
I mean, I'm not the city attorney, but I would say I don't think so. I mean, I feel. I feel we have enough flexibility and freedom within it that we don't need to do an update, but.
And and to be clear, um I think the goal is always to have the code. Not have sections that we don't really follow kind of a thing, so.
Be helpful.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, exactly. That was the thought. Right. So I'll let you decide whether or not reference to the living, breathing brand guide is required amendment or not. Okay, very good. Well, thanks. Next, we'll turn to the review of our city parking policies and regulations uh in anticipation of the. Implementation of middle housing and AD requirements in the twenty twenty four. Comprehensive plan amendments and I know. As an overview before we have Miss Spear chime in here and give us the real overview. This is for our benefit to give us kind of a heads up. This isn't obviously an action item for tonight, normal, we take action. Uh next week or the week after, this is really kind of to give us a heads up on where we're headed. With this particular topic for the comp plan amendment down the road, is that right? Okay, so go ahead and proceed then.
See if I can move down near you in just a second. So where we're going to be starting is in page, uh excuse me, one. Excuse me, start again, page sixteen of the packet and then the actual PowerPoint is on uh beginning on page sixty-nine.
Okay.
Thank you for your patience, Tiffany Spear with the Long Range and Strategic Planning Manager. So uh as the mayor just mentioned, this is um just kind of a teaser as you head into the holiday season, if you want something to think about. Uh but this is related to the changes in state law related to housing specifically and how in turn. The staff has started to ponder whether this is going to be affecting the transportation system in Lakewood. And the idea here is to just give you a very high level flyover. Uh some of the ideas that are gonna be further discussed by the planning commission, by the public, and then ultimately by the council starting next summer. So as it stands right now, the city does have a number of parking policies and regulations within uh the code and the comprehensive plan itself. Uh generally speaking, the planning policies and code do not allow. On-street parking in residential areas, it's only off-street in residential areas. There are places in the downtown and the station district. Subareas where on-street parking is contemplated or shared parking is contemplated. But in the residential areas, the R one through the R four code, it is all considered um off-street parking only. And so the idea again is to bring some thoughts to you. And you're you're welcome, of course, to talk about it tonight, but the idea is this is just the beginning of a long conversation. And that's basically what this. Next image is showing you, so a quick reminder, the uh. Basis for some of what we're talking about this evening is that we now have these growth targets. Uh for twenty forty-four in the city of Lakewood. Uh first of all, spread out through the different area median income levels within the city. So between now and twenty forty-four, a total of an additional about ninety-four hundred units. Is what the city is supposed to plan for and that is all broken out in that bottom line of the top. Uh graph in bold, so everything from permanent supportive housing at the zero to thirty percent area median income level. Up to uh about twenty-three hundred units at a hundred and twenty percent or above. And then in addition to that, the emergency housing units that are required for the city to plan for. The second chart on this uh screen shows you how right now the housing allocations are planned. Per the two subareas in particular, so in twenty eighteen, when the downtown subarea plan was. Adopted, the idea was to bring about a quarter of the city's twenty-year growth into the downtown. In terms of housing units and then almost three-quarters of jobs. For the twenty twenty-one Lakewood Station District subarea, it was about eighteen percent of the housing units and then about thirteen percent of the jobs. Meaning the remaining fifty-eight percent of housing units and twelve percent of jobs would be elsewhere in the city. Those two subareas predate the two bills that we've talked about a couple of times now at council. Uh that say now you have to allow for multiple units per lot of either accessory dwelling units or middle housing. So as we are going through this process of the periodic review, uh part of the conversation is area median income. And where these particular units would be identified as um possible to build, but the other part of it is to look at the subareas. And say, how much, if any, change do we need to make to those specific subarea growth targets? So uh the two new bills, I'll just refer to them as the missing middle bill or middle housing bill and then the ADU bill. But the middle housing bill uh requires either two or four. Middle housing units be allowed by the city. This is not a mandate on any property owner to go do this. It is allowing them to do so under code. The mandate is on the city to update its code. Uh to uh put them on all lots in areas that were uh on lots, excuse me, greater than a thousand square feet. In areas historically single families, so within the city of Lakewood, that's really the R one through the R four zones. And the distinction between the two and the four units per lot being allowed, that is whether you're in. A certain distance from a transit stop or not.
So I I'm I'm just trying to read the slide and then what it says, it says. Lakewood must authorize a minimum number of middle-income housing units on all lots. Okay, and it doesn't say we have to authorize. That law didn't say we have to authorize parking. I I I I guess, you know, that what that says there is. Is not parking specific.
In two slides, it will be. This this is just the general overview of the bill. So they'll they'll, I'm about to start talking about the parking, if you'll bear with me.
Okay.
Okay, okay. So the ADU bill talks about having at least. Two ADUs on all lots that are at least the minimum lot size for a zone. And then they are uh either attached, detached, or uh within the structure of the primary residence. In summary. You've got basically two units in single-family areas being allowed uh for middle housing. Within a quarter mile from major transit stops is four units in the single-family areas. But if you're in um anywhere in those single-family areas, but you have at least one of those units being affordable, you can go up to four. And then there's also another caveat regarding sewered or non-sewered areas, so there are some spots in Lakewood still remaining to be unsuared and if. Someone were to propose um bringing middle housing or ADUs to those lots, this caveat would apply. The last row there is talking about accessory dwelling units and again, two units in addition to the primary residence. The only difference here, it's it's almost hair splitting at this point, but. Middle housing is essentially R one through R four zones, ADUs applies there, but also to what is called the arterial. Residential commercial zone, which is about another twenty acres or so in the city. It's a very small uh percentage of the city's landmass. You've seen this map before, but just a reminder, the yellow. Or the the golden rod, if you wanna call it that, primarily on the west side of the city, that is where these two bills would apply primarily. In the pink blob areas, that's the lakes, the rivers uh or creeks. The blue checkmarks are where you've seen uh either wetland buffers or other critical areas that would limit the applicability of these bills. And then that weird U shape on the right-hand side or east side of the city. Where there's actually orange spots of residential area, that's where those higher uh number of units per lot would be. Um a possible because that is proximity to uh the major transit stops. And then the other uh spot where that would apply is down on the very bottom end where Tillicum, you see the orange down there as well. So here's the parking rules uh per these two bills. Uh if you're on a lot that is less than six thousand square feet, then no more than one off-street unit. Uh yes, spot per unit for parking can be required. If it's a larger lot than that, no more than two um off-street parking spaces per unit. If we're talking about an accessory dwelling unit, the city is not allowed to require public street improvements to permit an ADU. And then also on that half-mile mark, so I'll go back. Sorry, I'm gonna get you to the next map, my apologies. The half-mile mark on this next map that you're gonna see. No off-street parking can be allowed or can be required. So there is a part of the city where you can require a certain number of units based on the size of the lot for parking. But there is a part of the city where that would not be allowed either. These are the uh areas, the red dots happen to be those lots throughout the city that are less than six thousand square feet. They're kind of mixed throughout, but there are some areas where these bills would apply, where you'd be limited to one. Uh parking space per unit on those lots, should anyone ever build middle housing or ADUs on them. And then here we go, on the left-hand side versus the right-hand side, the the easiest way to try to. Draw your attention to the differences is just the size of the hatchmarked U. On the left-hand side, that's a quarter mile away from those major transit stops. And so again, that is uh where the Sounder Station is right now, where that Bus Rapid Transit Route is planned. Through Lakewood and then down until a come a quarter mile from that planned uh Sounder Stop, which is at this point. Intended to be completed by twenty forty-five. The map on the right is a fatter U or a wider U, that is the half-mile away from those same major transit stops. And so where you've got the quarter mile, that's where you can do more middle housing units per lot. Where you've got the half-mile, that's where you're not allowed to require additional off or any off-street parking. So there are limits to. How many you can uh require either at all or based on the lot size essentially. When it comes to parking for middle housing or accessory dwelling units. So the planning commission had two discussions about this uh in recent meetings and bringing this to you in summary format, you'll see that here. Uh essentially, they were asked some questions which will be in front of you on the next slide to um discuss if you wish this evening. Or just to kind of chew on for the next time this comes back to you. But the planning commission's preliminary reaction was to allow on-street parking in residential areas. To look at the street designs in those residential areas when you have some streets less than sixty feet wide. In order to allow for on-street parking and emergency access. Making sure that delivery vehicles and and maybe garbage runs or whatever uh those larger vehicles may be can fit. Looking at expanding shared parking programs and options to more areas of the city. Requiring investment both on the public and private side for on-street parking in residential areas. Establishing some sort of funding mechanism for these on-street parking systems, so. Whether it's permits or meters or something else. And then also uh just a suggestion to continually revisit these. Uh for a number of cycles until the councils and the city is comfortable that this is accomplishing what you wish. As perhaps more middle housing and accessory dwelling units come to the city. So the topics that were brought to you uh just as questions either for tonight or in the future. Is whether or not on-street parking in residential areas is something that the council wants to discuss or consider as part of the twenty-four periodic update. Uh and then if not, is there another alternative that the city wishes to discuss for? What we see may be an increase in parking pressures in those residential areas over time. It's not all gonna happen of at once, of course. Secondly, if so, should the on-street parking be publicly or privately owned and maintained? And then the the last three bullets there with their subsections underneath each are essentially. How should on-street parking be constructed? How should that be funded? How should maintenance be funded and how should enforcement be funded? So I'm happy to answer any questions, but otherwise, um again, this was, this was just a teaser for more to come.
Once complicated, right? Especially with an infill community like ours. So any comments or questions, Mr. Brand Center?
Well, you know, we. We we previously had this this sort of discussion about uh. Parking and off-street parking, being able to go and do that. That is. The idea that we do not allow. On-street parking in residential areas now is a myth. That that most of the residential streets in the city. There are people parking on them. And to a great extent, that's because. They they have shoulders. And not curbs, gutters and sidewalks. That um. Hmm, that I don't really see the. The 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 legislation, it says that if you own a property and it's it fits in one of these demographics. It can um, you can build. Some ADUs or some other sort of middle housing on them. Okay, that'll increase the the density. But I think that the that if you want to increase the density, but one of the amenities that you want to attract. To sell the properties or rent the properties is that you're trying to market them to people who are drivers. And you know, the whole idea that of that buffer system is that they're looking to increase the density of with people who don't have cars. Or don't u- use cars going on. So I don't think that the city has to. Really do anything to say authorize off-street parking or. Or or not. Our challenge has to do with when we improve streets and we look to improve the community to make it. More livable, more walkable. So when we have a right-of-way on a street we're going to improve. That. The uses of that right-of-way, you you know, the uses that compete for it are. Drive surfaces, sidewalks. Bicycle. Amenities or transportation and parking. And and I look at some of the things that have been some of our major projects going through. Um, if if I look at Onyx Drive. Onyx Drive eliminated a lot of shoulders, which eliminated a lot of. Parking and folks a- adjusted to and may well then have limit. What people want to put on, I mean, if someone along Onyx Drive wants to put build two ADUs on their lot. There's still not going to be any on-street parking in the way that 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 road is. In a few cases where we've. Done roadway improvements, we have made allowances for on-street parking. Portland Avenue in Tillicum is an example of where we. Made cutouts specifically for parking as we went through. Because of the house was there on the right-of-way to be able to go and do that. We still got the sidewalks in. We didn't get the bicycle stuff, but we. Made things to do that. And I think we can continue in that same vein situationally designed roadway improvements. To do that, but we, I think we can leave the idea of parking because. The the new. Same laws, while they. Impact what we have to allow property owners to build on lots. Um, that the idea of building something that is marketable and to the extent that. Parking makes something more marketable, that we leave that on them and 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 at their cost. I think we still maintain that where we want, where we have improvements, so. Where we currently require people to. Fund sidewalks, I think we want to still still look to do that and I. And that I recall there was a. Development in the Lakewood Station District. That wanted to develop their sidewalks, but there was enough right-of-way that they wanted to have the road designed. So that for the two blocks, there were, there would also be parking spaces in addition to the sidewalks. If that works, that's fine. Okay, and and it was gonna be at at their cost, okay, to be able to go and do that. And I think we can go forward and look. To do that. The the challenge we're going to have is. We let people build ADUs on roads of where the off-street parking is currently shoulders. And eventually, in order to make this a walkable. Safe community, we decide that that is a street that whose turn has come to get improvements and it's gonna get. Curbs, gutters and sidewalks, the storm drainage, utilities and things to do that. And just like it happens now, the parking is gonna go away and property owners have to adapt. To the fact that 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 is what's gonna happen. I wouldn't want to see us say. We're no longer going to focus on getting sidewalks on streets. Rather, we're gonna focus on getting parking on streets. You know, I think sidewalks should remain the city's priority to use public dollars to improve the community. And that property owners or the or the developers. You know, need to deal with the parking to the extent that they feel that parking is necessary for their. Their property. And then you, the other thing that's not on here is. There need to be places of where 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 a parked car obstructs traffic. Or creates a safety hazard that you can enforce that and that you can enforce have parking enforcement and I wouldn't want to change that. Okay, to do that. We don't do a lot of parking enforcement in Lakewood right now because. Eighty percent of the streets are more, you know. Shoulder parking al- allows you to be able to go that. The the biggest problem we have with parking is. That we hear from people is it obstructs mailboxes. But as we move to cluster mailboxes, there's less of that and 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 that 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 will go on. So um, I'm I'm I'm. I'm not seeing needing to make a definitive statement that we allow on-street parking as if we don't now.
Well, let me ask the reverse of that. Isn't the question here, uh, given. The ambit of state law, where we are told we cannot restrict in certain areas of the city, if you're within. Quarter mile of a major transit.
Half mile, yeah.
Or half mile. It seems to me the question we're grappling with is whether we should restrict. Parking to onsite as opposed to on-street in those areas where we can restrict. And what I hear you saying is the private development world. They're gonna figure it out. My concern, I throw it out for discussion, is. We heard, I don't know, over the last couple of weeks. Concerns about the impacts to neighborhoods over the use of ADUs as short-term rentals. So now we're also facing the potential impacts to neighborhoods. With not just the advent of an additional dwelling unit, but maybe two ADUs on a lot. Uh, but if we don't restrict parking to onsite use where we can. You're gonna have neighborhoods not only impacted by increased density, but increased cars on the streets. Streets that may not be um. Sufficiently wide enough or accommodating enough to allow on-street parking. In in my beady little mind, while. We are allowed to permit the density and a developer or homeowner may want to. Add that ADU or to, uh, they should. Where it's appropriate, have to accommodate their own onsite parking for that new development, in my opinion. So otherwise, the neighbors are getting impacted by the increased density, increased auto traffic and increased. Incumbrances in the street in the public right-of-way, and I think that's too much. Uh, in my humble opinion, but. That's my thought on that.
Well, uh, one observation that I will mention from the open house that was written recently at here regarding the housing changes. Where we had about seventy people in the room and another fifty or so online. Um, when I made the comment that the code right now does not allow residential on-street parking, I was laughed at. Because practically speaking, it happens, even though the code doesn't allow it. So as time goes by, um, and I think both council member Branster and you, Mr. Mayor, are kind of saying the same thing.
Yeah.
The the pressure's gonna rise because population goes up, potentially short-term rentals are in these areas as well. How is the city going to be ready for those additional vehicles? And need for parking, is it gonna be, does this council say we're gonna keep it on site? And if that means um.
Less density.
It it less density over time because there's, there's gonna be that result as people try to figure out what fits on their lot, right? Um, or do you look at the existing rights-of-way where it either is wide enough as it stands to add that? Parking on one side of the street, or if it's a narrower right-of-way where does exist in many of the R one through R four areas. Redesigning, restriping, I'm not physically changing the right-of-way, but restriping and. Discerning what else. So that that's where we're at is, does this even need merit inclusion in the twenty-four process?
So down Portland Avenue, remind me. When we did the streetscape redevelopment on Portland Avenue in Tillicum, didn't we have cutouts for on-street parking because? Those home frontages were pretty tiny anyway. So didn't we have cutouts or did we get rid of those? I forget.
I don't remember, I'm sorry.
Does anybody remember that on along Portland Avenue? Didn't we have?
Yeah, there 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 are a series of cutouts, okay? That uh were done in 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 the design of that road.
Right.
Okay, uh, you know, the 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 priority was to redo the road and get the and 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 get the sidewalks in.
Absolutely.
But and 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 in the. Course of that, they they also got curb and gutter. And that uh, as Public Works went through and they evaluated. Where they could make amenities for some on-street parking, because there was a lot of it that was already occurring there.
Right.
They they did the best that that they could and people also. Who were parking on-street on shoulder, okay, uh, that 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 you you ended up seeing. Two cars pulled into a driveway. Okay, so so you know, so so they 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 adapted to that. You, what you didn't see is you didn't see people paving over their front yard so they could park everything, I mean, that that that. That didn't happen. People were able to 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 adapt with that, and I think that. Uh, you you know, uh, where we have shoulders. There's parking capacity, but. Over time and perhaps over a long period of time, as we. Continue to urbanize the city and in as part of urbanization, make it walkable. I mean. We you know, we're we're seeing that same situation that occurred on Angle Lane. Where on the side that we put the sidewalks, there there used to be some level of of. Of 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 on-street parking. Um, and in 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 Oakbrook. Most of the discussions about loss of parking had to do with when people had guests. Where 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 can they park? Not 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 the matter of residents. Um, Mr. Matt, um. I I I think in the in the multi-family developments we stand, people have designed them. But that the the issue of number of parking spaces has come up as it did in the development on. Uh, Lakewood Drive. That ultimately that got turned into an over fifty units, so over fifty residential apartments so that. The mandatory requirements for parking were less. And and based on what they they would do, but we do have. Provisions in the code for somebody to create an off-street parking. Facility within walking distance of the primary development. Uh, it isn't used very much, but it but 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 it exists there. And then we've got the downtown. Subarea of where. There's a plethora of parking. You know, that that that's that's very in 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 inefficient to be able to go and do. But uh, I just don't think that, I I I I I think that that that. Right now, we should not. Guarantee that off-street parking will be at a particular location forever. Uh, with the exception of, I think the 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 comp plan makes some allocations about. Providing and even increasing some on-street parking in commercial districts where we're trying to encourage. Multi-use things of where there'll be some some storefront.
Let Mr. Boki comment in here, because he's been trying to get his hand up.
Okay, so a a couple of questions. In in the write-up, there was a delineation between a sixty-foot. Right-of-way and a non-sixty-foot right-of-way, and how does it, would explain that, please?
Uh, sure. So the way the current residential street design and standard plans are adopted for the city of Lakewood. If the right-of-way is uh in an area where you've got above-ground utilities, the minimum for the street design as it is created right now. Is sixty feet. But that street design does not assume any on-street parking. It is assumed to be curb, gutter, sidewalk and the the actual travelway for vehicles. The fifty-foot is when you have underground utilities, so they're not in the way along um the sides of the travelways, but it is again assuming. No on-street parking.
Say the last part again.
Sixty feet equals utilities above ground, fifty is below ground. Meaning you've got, perhaps they're under the sidewalk or perhaps they're, it's the same land used twice just vertically, so it can be narrower.
So. I I guess I was taken aback when I was reading this that. When some of these new subdivisions are going in. We're allowing them to make the streets. So narrow as they don't have to have parking, on-street parking. So so some of these newer subdivisions. Why wouldn't we require them to make the streets wide enough to to have at least one side of on-street parking? And then I'll comment on that.
That that is why we're here tonight, if I may. It's a policy decision ultimately for the council to make. As it stands right now. Uh, when Public Works, for instance, is is looking for funding for transportation projects. Or is looking at its transportation improvement plan that lasts for every six years rolling forward. They are not assuming any on-street parking in these residential areas. They are, they are planning and seeking funding and um what I've been told is the funding is much more available if you don't have on-street parking right now from the federal level. Uh, at least. The the question in front of the council ultimately is, do you want to change positions or not about that?
Okay, so I'll throw in my two bits, the um. I lived in Seattle in the last half of the nineteen eighties. And they were in a building boom of sorts and it was really the first, this is pre-GMA. But they were allowing relatively small apartment buildings, but you you know, dozens of units in an apartment building. On residential lots in what was up till then residential neighborhoods. And they had a parking requirement. And those streets get flooded with cars. I moved into one. Brand, it was brand new. It was in North Seattle. And fortunately, there weren't as many, it was a fairly low-density neighborhood. Is what we'd probably consider R three. And they had, I believe they had streets wide enough where there's parking on two sides of the street. But the requirement for the parking for the apartment, I think, was only one per unit onsite. So these guys bomb those streets. There there's, there's no getting around it. So if 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 we think that we're gonna have density. And not have people parking all over the place. In people's, you know, where, and then there you're gonna get these arguments over, well, that's my. Thing and they're gonna be like, oh, that's right-of-way and then we're gonna be adjudicating that. If if we think we can densify without doing something about on-street parking, I think we're naive. I it they will, if if you start getting any level of density in some of these neighborhoods. That it'll be a mess, even with a lot of on-street parking.
But do we want that?
Well, I don't think you can stop it, because once it happens, it happens and they're gonna be parking everywhere.
But that's the policy decision we're we're grappling with, right? Because you can, in effect. Control density in some of these residential areas through parking requirements, right?
Until and unless it got to the point where you weren't meeting your growth targets. And you start to have questioning from PSRC Growth Management Hearing Court, I mean, this is all theoretical, but the idea is. If you are at the point of with your parking requirements, people are not building to. Um, that planned growth target for a jurisdiction over time, eventually that's going to be the source of question, questioning, criticism, challenge.
So we're trying to build in the urban core, around transit-oriented development, those kinds of things, right, but then at some point. Does a suburban city like Lakewood decide that, okay, residential neighborhoods are no longer sacrosanct, we're going to change the face, culture, feel, touch. Of what historically has been residential in this city and just allow. Effectively strong.
And that is unfortunately what eleven ten and thirteen thirty-seven do. The state legislature has said you will allow this, and so it's up to property owners to decide how many, if any, units they want to add to their single-family parcel, and then.
Ability for for us to restrict parking.
There is the ability for you to follow those minimums, yes, and go beyond that if the city were to want to. Um, except for in the areas within that di- distance of the transit stops. And then it's just, it's it's the matter of, okay, what does that do over time practically speaking, that's the higher-level policy question that we're bringing to you as a first step tonight.
I completely get it, and I get the density piece, and I and I get where Mr. Bokey was in the nineteen eighties, uh, he probably had longer hair. Um, but I'm I'm thinking even in the twenty twenties, as I go up to Capitol Hill and visit my kids or their friends or whatever. It's really hard to travel through some of those streets because you've got parking on both sides of the streets. And and if you have a car coming in each direction. You know. Good luck, you better have a Kia. Or something, you know, to be able to make it around, it's just challenging.
Yeah, we're we're just in this, um.
It might get stolen. Yeah, 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 or a day, yeah, there were a day, yeah. It's it's a challenge, I mean, this is a good. Issue for us to noodle over, right, and we're just getting kind of a sense of it right now, because Bob's going to make the decision and we don't have to worry about it, right, Bob? Okay, good, planning commissioning. Um. Well, any other thoughts we could do, I know this is a first bite of the apple, we got a lot of opportunity to chew on this a bit, but it's. It's a challenge, because we either. Kind of go along to get along, uh, given that state law has kind of laid the plate for us. Or we take a step back, or we get more feedback from the neighbors, right, that's probably the appropriate thing. And figure out how they want their neighborhoods to evolve. So. Anything else to go to the order on that?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, anything else, Mr. Branseter, on that? You good? For now, anyway? Yes, indeed, okay, very good, well, now, uh, we will turn to our city attorney for an overview on our prosecution services.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Deputy Mayor and members of the council, I'm Heidi Walker, I'm your city attorney, and in addition to overseeing HR. Regular legal services and clerk. Operations, although I think you probably know that the clerk operations requires the most of my attention. Um, I'm here tonight to talk about uh, prosecution. In the city of Lakewood, prosecution includes the city of Lakewood, the city of DuPont, and the town of Stillicum. And um, our jurisdiction is exclusively misdemeanors that happen within either the city of Lakewood, the city of DuPont, or the town of Stillicum. If you've reviewed the materials, this is a follow-on to a briefing we gave a couple of years ago, and one of the main things we wanted to make sure the council was aware of. Is that our caseload is really dropping. And I want to be clear when I say caseload, what that means is the number of cases that are coming in for consideration of charges. And consequently, the cases that go through the system are lower in number than um, was originally the case, and. Uh, we put in a chart on the second page of the report that shows an aggregate drop since twenty fifteen of sixty-seven percent. Dropping caseload, and so um. The number of hearings has also dropped, maybe not at the same rate. And there's a chart to that effect on the third page of the materials. Um, at the same time, there's been a little bit of an increase in pro tem costs, that means a substitute judge is being brought in, as you know. Um, the manager reviews uh, the statistics coming out of the court, at least annually, sometimes more than that. And and in part because that's how we bill our customers, the city of DuPont and the town of Stillicum, and so. When he saw the trend that was occurring in the drop of caseload, it did occur to us that we might not. Need full-time judicial services to process fewer cases. And um, we're monitoring the increase in the pro tem costs, because if you drop the judge costs over here. But you increase the substitute judge costs, you may not have a true savings, so that's just, um. We're not totally sure what's going on there, but we wanted to let you know that we're aware of it, and we're trying to look at what some of the drivers are in that additional cost. And then um, your resources going into this, um, and we believe the resources are currently adequate. There's been a little bit of turnover in the last year, we have a new city prosecutor, and we've got a couple new prosecutors coming into uh, the front lines. Typically, frontline prosecution is not something a person um, comes out of law school and does that for the rest of their career. That would be highly unusual. And typically, people come in, they cut their teeth, they try a few cases, and they move on. Frequently, if they're working in district court, they'll move up to felony work. Sometimes they take that trial experience and they take it into the private sector or to some other type of practice. I become concerned if somebody seems very content doing frontline misdemeanor prosecution more than about three or four years. It's, there's just not enough of it, particularly in a city this size, to be. Super interesting, and I'll talk a little bit more about that when we get to talking about trial rates. Um. So our resources are adequate, we are scrubbing that right now, as I indicated, uh, we're looking at all the different numbers that are coming through. As you know, when body worn cameras came on, um. They they came on fully online sometime in the late first quarter, so we don't know the true impact yet, and we're. We're trying to look at that and make sure that when you allocated resources to absorb the extra cost of body worn cameras. For both public records and prosecution, that that's well-spent, and um, we're trying to make sure that we don't just add people to add people. So we're going to take a look at that before we um, go too much further down the road with it. Um, in terms of the prosecutorial philosophy, and I touched on this a little bit, the the trials, we don't do a ton of trials here. And we don't want to do a ton of trials here. The bulk of what happens in municipal court is really plea bargaining, because even at the lower caseload. We're at about, I would say somewhere between thirteen hundred and sixteen hundred cases a year. Um, to try that many cases. Would require you to allocate resources from other places, just to try all of those cases. And so the maximum for a misdemeanor is about a year in jail, five thousand dollar fines, something like that, and. So are you going to do that to every single person that comes before the court, and the answer is no. There are some people for whom a sterner sentence may be warranted, and I'll talk about that towards the end of the presentation. But um. Because we don't try a ton of cases, we try about one percent of our total caseload. Again, like I said, if somebody's been here for three years, they're mostly doing calendars, which means. Uh, anywhere between a dozen and two dozen people in a given morning or afternoon, coming through with a myriad of misdemeanors. Looking for what the right solution is to those misdemeanors. Um, and there was a question asked by the council along the way, okay, so what happens to these cases? Um. Approximately ninety-eight percent of our cases resolved by plea bargain. I looked to see what our uh, dismissal rate was, and I'll get to that in a minute, um, I wanted to touch on a couple specific areas first. Domestic violence. Um, our intent with domestic violence cases are to be a contact for the victim and try and access services for them. And that's done through a liaison with the Crystal uh, Judson Brain Center, as well as with the YWCA. There are some models that try to house victim advocacy within the prosecutor's office. There are two reasons I do not like doing that, number one, the objective of prosecution is to hold batterers accountable. We're not in the business of direct service to victims of of domestic violence, and I don't believe the second point, that we could. Appropriately resource it to be as effective as some of the people that we can partner with. And so for that reason, we try to partner rather than than replicate. Um. DUIs, our biggest issue, and we did talk about this a little bit last time, you may have heard on the news and everywhere else, the toxicologist is backed up on the blood results. Um, we got through breath testing several years ago and went to blood testing, because it was going to be so much more effective, and then the. Toxicology lab was so backed up that we ran into a problem, our new prosecutor. Realized that we were literally on the brink of losing cases for statute of limitation, and she takes a much more aggressive approach with DUIs. Um. To be blunt, a lot of times you don't need blood results to understand somebody's drunk. You know, we've all been in those situations where we look at someone and a blood test wouldn't necessarily change our minds, so um. We try to be a little more aggressive as prosecutors and creative in how we pursue those cases. possession of controlled substances, you're well aware that there have been back and forth with the legislature and everyone else about how those cases are handled. We have taken care of any Blake backlog, we got the benefit of a Rule Nine intern from one of the law schools. We went through all the cases and we have sort of cleared the decks. So the next question, and I I will get to that with our our final piece of this presentation, is what do you do now that you can? Arrest people for some amount of drugs, and and what's? Direction are we really going in with that? Therapeutic court, you're aware of Veterans Court, it continues to be very successful, very resource-intensive. Very successful, and I've personally handled Veterans Court on any number of occasions, when we've had any little. Gaps in the ability to staff it directly through prosecution, my personal opinion is, you don't send the new person in there, you send. As high up the chain as we can go, um. These folks are well aware the city cares about their success. We we believe in the court, and we really try to send that message, and they really are. All kinds of interesting people that come through there, and they're truly dedicated to succeeding in the program. Um. And that's grant-funded program. Friendship diversion, we're trying to dust that one off and put it back in play, it's a way of resolving matters pre-charging. So in other words, they would never hit your statistics, instead you take somebody who's. Very young, not much of a criminal record, not a violent crime, let's put them through a diversion and see if that's successful, try and um. Use our resources judiciously. Code violations, we do get, and these. Um, I think are best handled in municipal court, because I think we're very acutely aware of the impact on a neighborhood. You get the wrong pile of tires on a street, or somebody who has too many Hulk vehicles in their backyard. And it really does cause a lot of consternation, and we're well aware of that, and some of those cases. Can go on to be abatement cases and the like, as you know, you have a specialized team at the city, the CSRT that does a lot of that work. And um, we also have Assistant City Attorney, um. Eileen McCain, who normally operates more at the abatement level, but she's well aware of what's going on at the nuisance level at the same time, and so. Um, those cases get some extra attention. Infractions, I've become aware, getting to know our new chief, that he is very aware of how disconcerting some of the. Infractions can be, and we're taking a look at how we handle those, to try and ensure that if. Police are ramping up on infraction enforcement, we need to consequently ramp up on how we're handling them when they come through our courts. So we're looking at that. Um, case outcomes, this council has asked repeatedly, okay, so what happens with cases once they go to court? I have an answer for you that frankly, I'm not totally satisfied with, but it's a start, and we are trying to gather as much data as we can. Um, we try about, in terms of jury trials, a dozen cases a year, we have a trial go about once a month. And that's far less than one percent, um. We also know that about thirty-six percent of our cases end in dismissal. All of the other cases are somewhere in between, typically not bench trial type of cases, typically some type of a plea arrangement. A classic plea arrangement in municipal court is, if you can behave yourself for a year. And go get treatment and pay this fine, then we will dismiss the case at the end of that period, and then we monitor the person. Um. Those people have mixed bag on the success rate of that, because a lot of what happens in municipal court is with people who have a little trouble getting their act together. Quite frankly, they can't always organize their court dates, and so um, we have to be somewhat patient, and sometimes folks get extra chances. I did want to touch on the fact that dismissals are the consequence of a lot of different factors, some are what I just described, the person makes a deal with the city. I can behave myself, I can get treatment, I'll do what I'm supposed to do, and every once in a while you get somebody who really toes the line, and they get that dismissal at the end of it. There are other situations where witnesses move. Witnesses just don't want to come forward. Um, sometimes we find out that the way the story. Really went or is going to be presented in court is not the way that it needs to be in order for us to be successful. Every once in a while, you have mix-up on court dates or something like that, all all manner of little uh, wrinkles, and we are required. To carry the burden. It's not enough to sort of drop a hint that somebody did something, we actually have to be able to prove it. And so um, we do have. As I said, a thirty-six percent dismissal rate, I can't break it down to what the cause has been, and some of those blood cases. Um, also, you know, we weren't able to bring the evidence necessary. That brings me into the homestretch, which I know you've been waiting for, um. The question really is, what are we doing with what would be referred to colloquially as frequent flyers? The people who are coming through in a revolving door fashion and um, don't seem to be getting the hint. You have hyperlink in your materials, and this is on the second to last page, the city of Marysville. And the city of Marysville unanimously adopted an ordinance, and what they did was they defined certain crimes as what they call public disorder crimes. And if you had three of those crimes within a certain period of time, you get mandatory thirty days jail. Um. The third strike had to occur after the law took effect, the mandatory jail sentences would increase with the number of qualifying convictions, they went up to sixty days, then ninety days. The people who are facing those crimes have the option of petitioning the court to try and do treatment instead. Um. I was able to find out that the average stay in the Marysville Municipal Jail is five to six days, now that's not a fair reflection on their new ordinance. The ordinance has only been around since October, there's very little likelihood that they've had a chance to sentence very many people. I put that in there because one of the things you have to consider is. What is the cost of a bill that requires jail time? And so you're paying at Pierce County one rate, Niskualea slightly better rate, but if you require somebody to be in jail for thirty days at. I don't know what it is right now, I'm sorry, it's it's slipped from my mind, but I think it's at least eighty to a hundred and twenty dollars a day.
Yeah.
And so um, that's just something to be aware of, because where you put your resources here means you're not putting your resources there. Um, we have an ample general fund, but it is a finite general fund, so that's something to consider. The other piece to consider is that um, while the prosecutor has. Independent authority over how to handle criminal cases. Um, they can certainly adopt sentencing standards, um, consistent with what the council would prefer. Passing the ordinance, however, does send a message. And it does limit what the court or the prosecutor can do, because then you have it codified in code. Um. I don't have specifics on the cost of such a bill, but we could bring it forward to the council for independent consideration. I do know the city attorney in Marysville, he used to be an Assistant City Attorney in Tacoma, so um, I'm sure he'd be happy to discuss it if we if we needed to do that. I'd be happy to try and answer any questions you may have, you may have noticed in some areas, I'm doing a little bit of speculating. But uh, we hear the council loud and clear that you want to be. Um, updated on exactly what the process is with the cases, and that you are interested in how to handle the people that are using the most of our resources.
Questions? Mr. Branseter?
Yeah, yeah. Thank, thank you, there there were. There's some things that your presentation clarified. For me that I might have. for me that I might have been in 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 doubt about. But um, if if I, in in the discussion about domestic violence, and I know that domestic violence has been something that this council over the years has enacted some ordinances in order to uh provide some 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 greater penalties, but 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 the idea of it being it is to provide some outcomes. And I guess that in the presentation here, it is consistent with what I understood what we were doing. But what I'm wondering is, is there any analysis about that are the ordinances that the council passed and put in effect are having some desired impacts both on victims, on re- repeat offenders and on the impacts of children in 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 those situations?
Councilmember Branstad, uh, you are correct. This council took a strong stand on domestic violence and adopting ex- extended penalties for both strangulation and separately for the presence of children when domestic violence is being committed. And we will follow up with better data collection, but what I can tell you anecdotally or certain and without any doubt is that the those two features in our code are very strong tools for prosecutors to use with offenders. Because it's not just the usual, there are added penalties when those elements are present. And it sends a strong message when you're plea bargaining. Or if the victim perhaps doesn't want to come forward or isn't comfortable testifying, it gives you that little extra lift. I do know that we have tried at least a couple of cases using those specific code sections. They have not sat dormant, but I would suggest that their biggest use has been um, as a tool for the prosecution.
Okay, and thank you. And then um, in the discussion on DUI, there was a discussions about why it takes so long and all the different things over there. And then the last paragraph talks about rush requests and proceeds with available evidence rather than automatically putting DUI cases in a queue for test results. And thus far, this approach is meeting with success. What does success mean in that con- context of that sentence?
I'll tell a small bit of a war story, but this happens routinely. So previously, there was sort of this assumption at charging, oh, blood test, I'll put it in the queue to wait. And um, there is something very powerful about calling a defense attorney who is confidently relying on this to to go by the boards because there's no blood test, calling them and saying, you know what, I just read your police report for your client and I don't think I need a blood test for this, let's go. They really um, back down pretty quickly when they start to realize that you've looked closely at some of the other evidence you can use. The rush request piece, I um, I have been talking to our city prosecutor about this. It's a good move. I think at some point, they're gonna notice the number of rush requests from the city of Lakewood or if other cities start doing the same thing, and then you just end up with the queue again. So um, it's it's working right now, I don't know that it'll work forever, much stronger is figuring out ways to go without.
And earlier in the memo, there was a discussion and it and it had to do about about cost. And I think it's on
Page three?
It's it's on page eighty four.
Okay.
Okay, and it said, while the sitting judges part time that the court runs five days a week using pro temp judges and the pro temp budget has accordingly increased. Savings associated with a part time judge are to some degree illusory. Is that implying that going to a full time judge or a greater part time slice would would be financially beneficial?
No, and I may not be the best person to ask for this, but uh, the size of of the judge judicial time has been calibrated to the caseload. And what I'm implying, this may fall under the heading of why I'm universally beloved, is that I think we need to scrub why it's, why the calibration didn't come out to a better math problem. Because if you have this size caseload, you calibrated it to the amount of judicial hours. Why is the pro temp hours creeping up? Right, you don't have more cases, so why do you need more judicial hours? Not totally my lane, math or the court, but um, it is something worth noting. I I can tell you that starting several years ago with Adam Lincoln, we started really tearing into the volume in the court and what it takes to run the court in particular, if not for our own information, because of the fact that we're billing client cities. So we do need to really stay on top of where it appears that things aren't quite matching up. And and I'm just saying that that is one place that it doesn't a hundred percent match and to the degree uh, it is any of the city attorney's business. It can become my business if the pro temp judges create an artificial number of calendars. Because we are calibrated to the number of calendars. And and if you have a part time judge, you can only run so many calendars. But if you add extra judicial time that's not really noted for, then I'm stretching people in ways that I didn't necessarily count on, and it it just changes the way I allocate. I am resourced just fine, and in fact, I'm mindful that we're gonna get into a budget budget season that may require some trimming of the sales, but I I'm just saying that is one of the issues, we've calibrated to the caseload as best we can, but this is a place where something's sort of sneaking around. The court may have a completely different answer on that for you.
Okay, so the but talking budget wise, the costs for the part time judge and for these pro temp judges is not in your budget. But it's in, it's in Judge Mansfield's budget.
That's, that's correct, it impacts us in an ancillary way if it falsely inflates the capacity of the court.
Okay, and then the the last thing is, is there was a a reference in here about um, uh, therapeutic courts. And it said we have two, Veterans Court and a community court.
Correct.
And I was aware that we were exploring the concept of a community court. But I wasn't aware that that had been implemented.
I believe, again, this is a little bit of a question for the court, but the judge became aware of an opportunity with some grant funding. My understanding is that grant funding was allowed, but it moved at the speed of sound. And I believe we only just found out recently that we got the funding and have just started trying to put people into that community court.
So we don't have any data or any results or haven't received any information about what it looks like?
Not so far.
Okay, uh, and and regarding the Marysville ordinance as to whether we wish to emulate it in some way. I I was curious what the four offenses were that they that they that that they chose to to put under this three strike rule.
So we um, hyperlinked the ordinance. And it does define uh, public disorder crime means theft in the third degree, vehicle prowling, criminal trespass, and use of a controlled substance in a public place. Multiple charges on the same date count as one public disorder crime.
Okay, so you know, if if you know, if we were going to look to do something like that, I would tell you that the public would be more interested if we would do something and get some punishment for graffiti artists. Graffiti
Oh.
Uh, artists, it seems to be the one that 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 in in other words, I I not necessarily, I wouldn't necessarily, if we were to look at it, I wouldn't necessarily want to just copy that list. But I'd want to look at what are the ones that are more specific to us? And I guess I'd be interested in monitoring how effective they find that being before we jump in into the same swimming pool with them.
I I'd be happy uh, bringing that back to further discuss for sure. Mr. Laura Seller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Walker. Do we have data, talking about the the Marysville um, plan? Do we have data on what the financial and people impact would be had this been enacted at the beginning of twenty twenty three to give us kind of a a data point?
One area where we're a little bit shy on the data, and we've tried to assemble this list a couple different times, is what is the volume of frequent flyers in the city of Lakewood? I can tell you we have them. But again, it it does turn into a little bit of a math problem. So let's say that we were to select, you know, even if we only had twenty five that are, they're really going to qualify for this, they're committing crimes sufficiently frequently and so forth. The first person we put through this and they don't choose treatment instead, because remember in Marysville, that's one of the options. They go to jail for thirty days, our bill at Niskuale, I think right now is a hundred and twenty times thirty. Um, some of what's going on right now with our in our people who are in jail are getting what's called credit for time served. So they don't have the money to bail out, they're arrested, they're put in. It takes somewhere between thirty and sixty days to satisfy speedy trial when you're in custody. So um, they would already have served the time by the time they're in, so there's not a huge cost bill. I'm not sure whether we're accomplishing anything at that point. For somebody who did make bail, um, they might have been in jail overnight or something like that. So they would, we would pay the freight of a hundred and twenty times thirty, which I guess is three hundred.
Thirty six hundred.
Thirty six hundred dollars. There's a reason I'm not your finance person. So that's, you know, if you take that times the twenty five people, you start getting up there. I think your jail budget right now is starting, it's in the hundreds of thousands, I just don't know precisely. But um, so as a percentage of that, that's what you're looking at.
And in theory, if you have frequent flyers that are continually offending, you hit sixty and ninety days if we adopt the same thing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, you would hope at some point, yeah, and we did have something of an experience with in particular graffiti artist who um, honestly, every time he got out, there was more graffiti. And we finally did ask the court and the court obliged us to put him in jail for a full year. And I can tell you, even when he came through on any kind of a revisit to the court, he, on his jail shoes, he was graffitiing. I I think at some point, you're, there's that whole question of whether you're dealing with maybe drug issues, mental health issues, some of those things.
Uh, and then the other question I had on page eighty three, you've got the chart of uh, the number of cases, right?
Right.
For twenty twenty three, it's through the end of October, is that annual total representative of the first ten months of the year? At thirteen sixty six, or is that prorated?
Uh, thirteen sixty six is prorated.
Okay.
Yep.
With the decline in cases and, you know, the precipitous drop and the increase in cost that you referenced, I mean, at some point, does it beg the question whether we even need a municipal court?
Um, there is an RCW, I've spent more time with it than I care to admit. So the way that it works is if a city doesn't have its own municipal court, then cases referred to the district court without some kind of an agreement in place, the county can charge us for as they wish to, and that's an RCW. And it happened because a lot of cities thought, oh, we'll save money, we just won't have a court. Um, to the degree that we would want to make a deal to have Pierce County take us on, bear in mind that it will be challenging to get them to agree to the Niskuale jail. And also, for whatever reason, Pierce County does not seem able to do the televised uh, appearances, which is strange to me, but they don't seem capable of doing that. And so even if we could get them to agree that the Niskuale was an okay place to hold people.
We'd have to schlep.
We have to deal with the transport and so um.
It's big expense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So those are things to think about. Again, there's not necessarily a air quotes right answer. It's just a matter of figuring out where you want your resources to be.
What's the collective thought about bringing back the uh, Marysville ordinance example for further discussion? I think it's with a expanded or different list of potential knucklehead activities if we qualify. I think it's a good idea.
Right, my thought on that would, oh, go ahead, Paul.
Well, I was gonna ask some other questions, but uh, mandatory minimums always sound good. Right, because they they just sound good. And then, and then as you go into a recession and revenues are going down, you're paying a hundred and twenty bucks a day for someone for ninety days, so is the benefit to us over ten thousand dollars? Plus, we're responsible for their medical costs. So, so who who wins, right? That the hope is that they don't, they just leave town, right? But I don't know that they do. So it al- it always, you know, initially, when I heard about the Marysville doing that, I thought, well, that's ingenious, right? That's that's because so much has been kind of pushed into the municipal courts now because of, especially on the drug side. And I I would just be, I would just be careful and I really need to understand, like, how many times do you think we use it? Because twenty five people, and then you were already adding umpteen thousand dollars to our jail budget because the price is going up, the Niskuales know they got us, right? They they know what everyone else is charging. So we we need to be really careful with that, because then you're 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 it can just get out of hand really quickly, right? And I I can't say what out of hand means, but if someone's ninety days and it's their fourth whatever charge or fifth whatever charge, is it, is it worth, right, yeah, I mean, I, it's, these are tough, that's a tough call. So I'd I'd like to know how much, how many of these things we think we're gonna have. It might be worth it to 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 catch up with some of this stuff and get these guys in there for thirty or sixty days. But I I think there's more facets to mandatory minimums than and and it's interesting that, and I'll throw my my, put my legal hat on.
Yeah.
Society has moved so far away, the the general thinking on mandatory minimums. And I'm not gonna argue mandatory minimums if they worked or not in the nineteen nineties, but the 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 school of thought, I just don't know that if the first person who takes the Star State Supreme Court doesn't win on Marysville. I I mean, they'll 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 come up with some legal rationale, they'll come up with some rationale, whether it's legal or not, to say, no, you you can't, this is cruel and unusual, or this is, you know, you have to prove that. I I don't know, they'll they'll come up with something bizarre. So I'd like to really see how the Marysville thing works.
Wasn't there some data that we've received in the prosecutor? Was it four years ago now when Lindquist came and and did a data driven explanation on how they were dealing with frequent offenders? So this would be obviously on the felony side, but uh, on on that side. And I thought they had some success in that regard, at least on the felony side.
We will certainly um, look at the concerns raised by council member Bokey as well as try to find some of the other data from both. I think there have been times when Seattle's tried to look at frequent flyers, Pierce County's definitely mentioned that and and some other jurisdictions as well, so we can certainly try to see. Pierce County's definitely mentioned that and and some other jurisdictions as well, so we can certainly try to see what's out there in terms of available
Cause it, yeah, cause the anecdotal evidence, and again, from fourteen years of sitting here, it seems to me we often receive information from the police department that it's the ten or twenty percent that are doing eighty or a hundred percent of the bad acts, right? And as I recall, Lindquist talking about at the time, they were focused on the data that if they could laser beam their attention on a data driven way, on the twenty percent of the knuckleheads doing bad stuff, they would really have a greater impact. And so if if that's something that the data would inform us could happen here, if that's what's happening in our own community, it may be worth looking into. So I mean, we're not committing ourselves to anything except digging in.
And you probably won't hear anything until um sometime mid the late first quarter is what we're thinking.
I think that's fair.
Um, so I I do want to go to the numbers on
Yep.
page eighty three real quick. The so so the drug law finally got worked out by the state. By happenstance, they finally got it done. And so now it's, those are misdemeanors. I'm assuming we're gonna start making traffic stops again. So why why is it the numbers? Is it is there any indication that the numbers are are bottoming out? I mean, I'm I guess I'm not understanding. I I understand it for a while, COVID just in general de policing. Um, movement away from charging anybody, various things like that. But we're now in twenty twenty three, going into twenty twenty four. We've supposedly kind of fixed the drug laws, now misdemeanors, it should be in this court. We've we've given the okay as a body that we can start stopping people for traffic stops. We're is is this coming solely from the city of Lakewood, or is this our two our DuPont Silicon also, they're not having any volumes? I'm I'm not understanding why this thing's isn't bottoming out. I guess I don't have an expectation that we'll be at twenty fifteen, but I'm trying to get wrap my arms around that we're still less than half of what we were in twenty nineteen. Help me out.
Well, I think uh remember, University Place is gone now, and that was the bigger of our three customers. Um, I I don't think it would bother DuPont and Town of Silicon for me to say their caseload is pretty de minimis. And uh they, this really is at this point Lakewood driven numbers. And sometimes it can have to do with um where officers' attention is going, if they're primarily focused on bigger fish, we won't see as many cases, things like that. We'll see an uptick after a holiday weekend like we just had, you know, um, so some of the patterns hold. But yes, overall, I think I think we will hold at this kind of a number unless there is, well, this even accounts for some of those um like shoplift emphasis and things like that. Um, but if we did sustained routine emphasis patrols, we might see some kind of an uptick, but it still wouldn't be on the order of getting us back to old numbers.
Go ahead.
Uh, just a quick question. So this is for misdemeanors in our court. Is there a similar decline in felonies at the county level?
I do not know, but I can find that out. Yeah. I I think there may be. It seems like when the police have made their presentations, they've talked about certain crimes. A few of them spike, but but overall, there's been things have calmed down a bit, but I I know that um different crimes sometimes spike at different times, so I'll see what I can find out about twenty twenty three.
Great. Anything further on that? I appreciate the update. We all do. Well, if not, then we will take a quick gander at those items scheduled for December for regular city council meeting. You can see on our agenda tonight. Our list is somewhat long, but certainly doable. So now we'll turn to Mr. Caulfield for his weekly report. Mr. Caulfield.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor and Deputy Mayor, council members. Just a few updates. Because you know, uh, earlier this month on Saturday and Sunday, November eleventh and twelfth, we held our annual fall community cleanup. Uh, it was a success. It accommodated three hundred and thirty four vehicles. This is actually a fourteen percent increase from two thousand twenty two and a thirty three percent increase from two thousand twenty one. So um still not as popular as the spring cleanups, but um we did we did see a significant increase in participation. Um, also wanted to report out, I'm just talking to the police chief, Patrick Smith, regarding the uh flock safety cameras, and as you know, um, that system was implemented in the early to mid part of October. However, really, we're beginning to track data at beginning in November. And for the first two weeks in November, we have seen a decrease in uh stolen vehicles from forty eight to twenty two, which is a decrease of over fifty percent. I know that's just, you know, a couple of weeks, but it is trending with what happened in October as well. And so um, you you know, thus far, based on that, certainly um the cameras, the word is getting out in the street, and it does seem to be serving as a deterrent to the criminals to either not come to Lakewood, but more importantly, don't come to Lakewood and don't steal vehicles from our residents and our businesses. So uh we'll continue, of course, to track that on a year to date basis. It will take well over a year before we have data to do a uh before and after on that. But certainly, the uh data um initially, you know, based on the first, you know, six to seven weeks that it's been up and running, has been positive. Um, we uh met with uh DSHS, uh, we could go Friday um regarding historic Fort Sillicum and the city's um desire to want to take ownership of the four historic buildings out there, as well as the equipment, the cannon that's out there. And uh we had provided DSHS with a couple of options on um, you know, kind of the area to be encompassed as part of a land lease that would include the buildings. Um, DSHS came up with a third option, and uh for the city, uh, we believe it works. We also ran it by the Historic Fort Sillicum Association, which is the entity that provides the services out there. They had a board meeting last Tuesday evening, and uh, long story short, they are on board and they are supportive of that. The next steps that we're working on is we want to get an understanding of what the annual maintenance costs are associated with um owning those buildings, and so our Parks and Recreation Department are going to be following up with their respective staff to get an understanding of that. Um, also, just, you know, friendly reminder, one of the motivating factors that the city is pursuing this, and this is part of your, this has been and continues to be part of your legislative policy manual, is with the city taking ownership, we have a, we as a city are in a better position to be able to bring funds forward either through our lodging tax monies, because that is a significant tourism activity center that's out there, or other means to be able to make improvements to the buildings and to help protect and preserve them long term. And it's not that DSHS and Western State Hospital is not, but that is not their primary business. That is not the focus of their business, whereas the city, we believe we can step in and do a better job there, and DSHS actually concurs with that. So uh more to follow there, and uh also, we believe that the um transfer of the land can occur uh via some kind of a quick title or something like that, would not have to go through a legislative process with a budget provisional language uh because it would be a land lease. It would take action by this body from a legislative standpoint, but it would not have to go through any kind of state legislative process. Um, we also continue to have conversations and work with Camp Murray about uh moving forward with developing a master plan for improvements down at their boat launch on American Lake. And uh the next steps on that, we've been having some dialogue in terms of them identifying their concerns, their issues, and vice versa. So the next steps is to develop a memorandum of understanding outlining, um, you know, what role the city will take, what Camp Murray will do, what their concerns and issues are as we move forward with developing that master plan, including providing for uh local access, particularly pedestrian bicycle access uh to the boat launch, and of course, making improvements down there. This body did appropriate a hundred thousand dollars in ARPA funds earlier this year to do that. And uh so again, the goal is to try and have an MOU, you know, prepared by the end of this year into the first quarter of two thousand twenty four, and then in two thousand twenty four, actually undertake the master planning process, uh, not just with Camp Murray, but other interested parties as well. So just wanted to again, give you an update that that is 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 moving is moving forward. Um, as it relates to upcoming events, um this Wednesday, uh, November twenty ninth at zero eight, uh, there'll be the flag changing ceremony over at the Plume Steel uh Coffee Company in recognition of our forefallen officers. Um, that same day, um, all day, beginning at zero six through uh five thirty in the afternoon, we'll have our fourteenth annual fallen officer food food drive, as well as our blood drive. So if you're interested in giving blood, I think the slots are filling up quickly. Um, and then um a week from um this coming Wednesday, uh, we're gonna have our annual employee recognition event over at Clover Park Technical uh College over at the Rotunda, and of course, the council, you're all invited to to attend that. It's a great event, and we'll be having annual employee recognition. Um, a week from this Friday on December eighth ninth, a couple of things happening. One is AWC is having their elected officials essential workshop. And certainly not only for new council members, but for experienced council members, if you're interested in attending that. Um, and we have provided you a links, uh, you can either attend in person or virtually. They have number of locations. I think Gig Harbor is actually sponsoring, so if you wanted to go over to Gig Harbor, or if you wanted to participate virtually, um um, would encourage you to do that. It is from eight thirty um AM to two thirty PM. And then, of course, uh later that afternoon, beginning at four PM, we have our Christmas parade, uh, followed by our Christmas tree lighting right out front here. You might see that uh the tree has been installed uh right in the roundabout. And that tree lighting typically occurs around five thirty, five thirty PM. Um, and then uh the following week, this second week of December, um, a couple of meetings, one is with our state delegation from the twenty eighth and twenty ninth regarding your priorities for the upcoming short session um down in Olympia. And then on Thursday, the fourteenth, um, a meeting with your Pierce County Councilmember, uh Jenny Hitchen, just like you did last year, as it relates to your county council legislative policies. So um that kind of takes us out to the middle of December. So with that, that's my report.
Thank you very much. I'm just adding some of the events to my calendar here. Any other questions for Mr. Caulfield on the report? Lots of stuff going on in December. I was just looking at, there's a lot of stuff going on in December. So that'll be good, though. Very good. Well, thank you. Appreciate that. Now we'll go ahead and turn to council comments. Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I thought that the presentations today were just great and really insightful. There's a lot of discussion to come and a lot of things that we need to really review and pay attention to, so I'm looking forward to that. And I hope that everybody had a wonderful Thanksgiving. And that's it for me.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Laura Sella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I had the opportunity to attend the ribbon cutting for Washington Boulevard last week, uh, just before Thanksgiving. And uh, that road looks really great. Uh, I drove it today as well, just to just to enjoy all the roundabouts and uh and and it was, it was really nice. I look forward to seeing some art that we can put in those roundabouts and seeing things get finished up in terms of landscaping and lighting and all that. So uh, good job by city staff, and thanks to the neighborhoods for for powering through as we uh as we get things built. Uh, I also wanted to thank the members of our youth council for coming to the meeting tonight. Uh, it was great to get their insights on what they're working on, and I think we provided them some good feedback on how they can work with us to provide their voice so we know what to do from a council perspective to benefit the youth of our community. Uh, and I intend on attending the flag ceremony uh on Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Bokey. Very good. Councilmember Branstad.
I'm good, Mr. Mayor.
Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just sorry that I missed the youth council's report. And I want to see if we can work back to getting them to sit on the dais to do their presentations at some point, when we can sit in the audience like we've done in the in the past. I'd love to see that again. So, and I did have a happy Thanksgiving, and I hope everybody else did still. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, just a few items. On Tuesday, the twenty first, I uh was invited to attend the ribbon cutting ceremony for the Pial Runner, which is a service that is uh put out by Pierce Transit, and so I had a chance to meet with Congresswoman Strickland there and a few others, and uh enjoyed uh very much opening that new service. As I mentioned the last time, it's kind of like an on demand service within a zone. And so ultimately, Pierce Transit will be doing this in various zones in its transit service area. Hopefully, it'll come to Lakewood soon. So it's a really good service. It's a van on demand service. It will enhance accessibility for those uh that have limited mobility needs and certainly limited financial means, and I think it'll be, it'll be a good service in that area. So more to follow on that. Uh, on Wednesday, I did attend the JBLM North Access Improvement Project ribbon cutting. It was great to see the road improvements come to fruition. I know the neighbors have uh long awaited this day that it can be open. There was a little bit of confusion out there when the so the big blocking signs are still there, but I convinced everybody as best I could on social media that it is open, so you can travel even though it's not fully complete. And I think uh there is some appreciation. I I I know there's growing appreciation for the the work that the city has done out there, so good work. On the day after Thanksgiving, I interviewed um four candidates for the planning commission slots that are opening up. Uh, as you know, we have four slots to fill. We're losing a lot of institutional knowledge, but I'm pleased to report that uh we have some fantastic candidates that have uh incredible backgrounds, acumen, and an interest in serving, so I will be bringing those names forward through the city clerk for confirmation by this body the next regular meeting. So that's a good thing. And then this week, um, again, I'm pleased tonight we had the youth council. Look forward to having them actively engaged as I gently was nudging uh on some meteor issues, so that'll be a good thing. So lots of stuff going on. I do plan to come to the event on the twenty ninth, Wednesday, the Fallen Officer Flag Flying Ceremony, so I'll be there, and I'll try to stop by on the Officer Food Drive, as well as all the other meetings coming up the following week. So lots, lots going on. Any else for the good of the order? It's a good meeting tonight. Thank you for your attention. We're adjourned.